Good evening. Welcome to the 1,198th Regular Meeting and Public Hearing of Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearings on request for preliminary plats and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to the City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. Resolutions, or excuse me, petitions requesting a waiver of use or a site plan, if they're denied tonight, they will have, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. Mr. Bonjero will be filling in as our secretary, so, Mr. Secretary, if you can call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Bonjero is here. Mrs. DeNaro, absent. Mr. Ventura?
Is here.
Mr. Karen Magno is absent. Mr. Willsaw?
Is here. Also with us tonight, we have Mark Toramina and Stephanie Reese from our Planning Department. For the folks in our audience, the format of our meeting is we'll call each of these items that are on our agenda. Our planning staff will then give background information on the item. We'll ask that the petitioners come forward and speak to the item. We'll have some questions for you, I'm sure, and then if there's anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against any of these petitions, we'll have an opportunity for them to come up as well. With that, we have just a miscellaneous section of our agenda, and, Mr. Secretary, if you could start with item number one.
Sure. Petition number 2022-02-02-03 submitted by Tissio Architects, Inc., on behalf of Plymouth Auto Sales, requesting a two-year extension of the waiver use granted on May 2, 2022, CR number 135-22, involving the operation of a used auto dealership with repair facilities and outdoor display of vehicles at 36534 Plymouth Road, located on the north side of Plymouth Road between Levann Road and Market Street in the southwest corner, quarter of Section 29.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a request for a two-year extension of a waiver use that was granted to Plymouth Auto Sales back on May 2 of 2022. This is for a used auto dealership with repair facilities. This property was previously occupied by Dick Scott's Freedom Power Sports and is currently occupied with Honey Bin's, a wholesale liquidation store. Mr. Chairman, we have two items, of course, by us to read on this item.
Yes, please.
Our first is dated March 17, and it is from the Accounting Department, or the Finance Department, indicating that they have no objections, because there are no sewer charges, or, excuse me, outstanding amounts receivable, either general water or sewer. That letter is signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant, and then a similar letter of no objection coming from the Office of the Treasurer dated March 29, and signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. And is there any questions for our planning staff, for any of our commissioners? If not, our petitioner is in the audience with us tonight. Good evening, sir. If you'd like to start with your name and address, please.
Good evening. Julian Scheinlari, 50470, West Fellows Creek Court, Plymouth, Michigan, 48170.
Thank you for coming tonight. And anything else you'd like to tell us about your extension request that you have?
Well, the reason for the extension, as you may already know, is we weren't able to find a contractor to start work on the property. Then we made a decision to lease it out. We initially wanted to lease it out for a year, but that wasn't doable, so that's the reason why we're asking for a two-year extension instead of a year. Dick Scott's moved out sometime towards the end of June, so there wasn't really much time left in 2022 to do much at all, on top of not having any contractors willing to start out on the property.
Okay, very good. Is there any questions of our petitioner from any of our commissioners? I don't see any questions. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? It's not a very controversial item. I don't see anybody coming forward. Well, thank you for coming this evening, Mr. Shymarni. If there is anything else that we need of you, we'll ask you here in just one second, but otherwise, I think a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura?
Offer an approving resolution that the request by Tissio Architects Incorporated on behalf of Plymouth Auto Sales for two-year extension of the waiver use granted on May 2, 2022, CR number 135-22, involving the operation of a used auto dealership with repair facilities and outdoor display of vehicles at 36534 Plymouth Road, is approved, subject to City Council approval, and provided that all conditions imposed by Council Resolution Number 135-22 in connection with the petition 2022-02-02-03 shall remain in effect.
Okay. Is there support?
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Ventura, supported by Mr. Long, to approve. Is there any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, if our secretary could please call the roll, a motion to approve.
Sure. Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero is aye. Mr. Willsaw?
Vote's aye, and the motion passes. We'll go to City Council with that, approving your recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And that moves us on to item number two on our agenda.
Petition number 2023-03-08-02 submitted by Four Winds Church, requesting approval of all plans required by Sections 3.06 and 13.13, a Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended, in connection with a proposal to expand the parking lot of the church at 31840 Seven Mile Road, located on the north side of Seven Mile Road between Merriman Road and Osmos Avenue in the southeast quarter of Section 3.
Okay. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. This is a request, again, to expand the parking at the Four Winds Church, which is on the north side of Seven Mile between Osmos and Auburndale Avenues. The church property is about 1.7 acres. It has 290 feet of frontage on Seven Mile and a depth of 256 feet. The zoning of the property is RUF World Urban Farm. There are three streets that border the site, Seven Mile, of course, and then Auburndale Avenue and Osmos Avenues. There's an existing church on the property that's about 8,000 square feet in size. It sits near the middle of the property. Parking is provided in the front and along the west side of the building currently. The church has a total of 33 parking spaces presently. There are two drives, both located off of Seven Mile, that provide access to the site. And as you can see from the aerial photograph, if you look carefully, the church maintains a small play area, which is located directly behind the building. The site was originally developed by the Hebrew Schools of Metropolitan Detroit as a private institution in 1961, and then over the years, other various organizations and institutions have occupied the building mainly for educational purposes, and that included a nursery school and then most recently a Montessori, Montessori center. Four Winds received approval to occupy the property in September of 2021. To the east, to the west, and to the north of the property are residential homes, and then south across Seven Mile is the Rotary Park Nature Preserve. Four Winds proposes to construct a parking lot on the east side of the property. The new parking area would accommodate 23 spaces and connect to the existing parking lot on the west side of the property via a new drive that would run along the north property line. On-site traffic circulation would be counterclockwise using one-way drives and angled parking. The vehicles would enter from Seven Mile Road using the existing drive approach, which is on the east side of the property, then proceed north through the new parking lot, and then continue west along this north drive, where then they would enter the existing reconfigured parking lot, turning south, and then heading back out to Seven Mile Road using the westerly driveway. The configuration of the parking area in front of the church would not change. That, too, is presently one way with angled parking. Altogether, the new parking arrangement would provide for 52 parking spaces, so this would be a net increase of 19 spaces over what currently exists. Parking typically for religious institutions is based on a ratio of one space for every three seats in the sanctuary or main assembly hall. In this case, the church's sanctuary has capacity of about 150 persons, which would translate to about 50 parking spaces. The plan shows new landscaping along the three street frontages, but not along the rear of the property. Currently, there's a private wooden, or, excuse me, a privacy wooden fence that separates the church from the adjacent residences. The distance between the fence and the church play area is about 20 to 24 feet. The new drive would be about 15 feet wide, so in essence, what this leaves is about seven feet between the edge of the new driveway and the property line for any landscaping. The dumpster enclosure would remain in the northwest part of the site. That would be repositioned slightly to accommodate the new drive aisle and parking arrangement. Any requirement by the Engineering Department for engineer, for stormwater management would have to be accommodated underground. We discussed lighting at the study session. Currently, the site has, is illuminated using two pole-mounted fixtures, and then soffit lighting is provided on the building itself. We have a number of items, correspondence, Mr. Chairman, so I'll read those out now, if you don't mind.
Sure, go ahead.
Our first is from the Engineering Department dated March 21, and it reads, "The existing parcel area are currently served by public sanitary sewer, water main, and storm sewer. Per the submitted drawings, there are no planned alterations to the sanitary sewer and water main services, so we do not expect any impacts to the existing systems at this time. The proposed drawings do indicate any stormwater detention, which will be required in order to meet the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance's vote. We will do a thorough review of the plans once they are submitted for permitting. Should be noted that any disturbances within the Seven Mile Road right-of-way will require the owner to obtain permits from the Wayne County Department of Public Services." And that letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next, we have a letter from the Livonia Fire and Rescue dated March 31 that reads, "We have no objections to the proposal with the following stipulations. Number one, a fire access road shall be provided with not less than 20 feet of unobstructed width, and have a minimum of 13 feet, 6 inches of vertical clearance in accordance to 18.2.3.4.1.1 and 18.23412 of NFPA 1, or 2015. And then, number two, fire department access roads shall be designed and maintained to support the imposed loads of fire apparatus and provide an adequate all-weather driving surface. Preliminary plan set is showing a 15-foot drive path between the ends of the parking lines. A further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official plan set." And that letter is signed by Brian Cuckla, Fire Marshal. Next, we have a letter of no objection coming from the Division of Police dated March 21, and signed by Paul Walters, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Next is a letter from the Inspection Department dated April 10 that reads, "Number one, the dumpster enclosure gates shall be of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass, and when not in use, closed at all times. And number two, the barrier-free parking spaces must be eight feet wide with a five-foot wide hashed access aisle. A minimum of one barrier-free van accessible aisle shall be provided. The van-accessible parking space shall be 11 feet in width with a five-foot wide hashed access aisle. This department has no further objections to this petition." And that letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. We have a letter from the Finance Department dated April 11. They indicated that there were unpaid water and sewer charges in the amount of $131.34, but those have been paid, and we have confirmed receipt of that, and that letter is signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. And lastly, a letter of no objection coming from the Office of the Treasurer dated March 29, and signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any questions for our planning staff? Mr. Long?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Toramina, if you go back to the engineering letter?
Yes.
It says that the proposed drawings do indicate any stormwater detention. Should that read "do not indicate"?
I believe that, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I just want to make sure that it's on the record correctly.
I think you're correct there. That's a mistake, yeah.
Okay. So, if we could note that.
A rare mistake, I'm like.
Absolutely.
Very good. Any other questions for?
No, thank you.
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. Long. Anyone else? Mr. Bonjero?
For Mr. Toramina, on the plan, it shows 15 feet for the drive aisle in the back, but we've got an issue with it being required to be 20, so it hasn't been changed for this meeting. Does that present any issue?
Well, it's going to have to get resolved either tonight with a resolution by the Planning Commission that recommends keeping it the way it is shown on the plans, or let the final decision be made by their project, by the project engineer and our Inspection Department and Fire Marshal, in determining whether or not that's going to qualify as a fire access road and should be 20 feet in width.
Okay, so if we approve even at like the 15, it may or may not work for the petitioner because it could go to plan review, and they'll say, no, it's got to be 20, right? So, do you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. I do, and I have not been able, we have not been able to resolve that issue internally with, between the departments. We discussed this at the study meeting, and to understand what the impact would be by going to 20 feet, it would really push that driveway much closer to the edge of the property, which I think the Commission was concerned about. The other option was pushing it further south, removing the shed that they use for storage, and then lastly, just keeping it 15 feet. You know, my preference would be to do either B or C, either push the road south and get to 20 feet that way without moving any closer to the north property line. Of course, that would require some changes to the play area, or alternatively, just keeping it 15 feet, which, you know, I don't know that 360-degree access is needed for this property. I think there's, you know, adequate access right now for emergency purposes, so I don't really see the absolute need for.
More than 15?
Yes, I do, yeah. I just, I just don't. I mean, the site has existed for, you know, how many years?
Yeah.
Over 60, 70 years, you know, without, or 60 years without, without the need for access along the back of the property.
Okay, so I guess the petitioner will have to have an alternate plan. If it does get stopped, and they're, you know, they're going to enforce the 20, they need a backup plan to make it happen.
If we approve this plan as is, and then it's forced to go 20 feet, we, you know, they could, we could either make that provision in the motion to allow that adjustment if it's, if it's forced, or have them come back and reconsider.
Revisit.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for our planning staff? If not, our petitioner is here this evening. Good evening. Again, we'll ask you, you start with your name and address.
Good evening. My name is David Hamilton, and I live in South Lyon at 28844 Vista Way, two words, 48178.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. And how do you represent the petitioner?
I'm a member of the church. Drive a little farther than most, but we like the message, so.
Excellent. Well, thank you for being here tonight. Is there anything else that you would like to tell us about this request, based on what you've heard so far?
A few things. Yes, we are aware of the, of the issue regarding the width of the drive. We would like to keep moving forward with the plan as it's been presented. We are open to making it 20, but that puts a huge hardship on us in moving the building or giving up some of the green space to the north, and we were, we had talked, and we were totally on board of putting some arborvitae's back there for additional screening for the, from the north neighbors. The other thing we did is I wrote letters to the ten immediate neighbors on all sides of us, and I did not, I prized them of the plan. I sent them that picture, and so they kind of have a good idea of what's going on. I encouraged them to reach out to me if they had any concerns, and I did not even get one phone call. So, I, at this point, I can say that I don't have any objections from the neighbors. In fact, we're trying to be good neighbors in the first place by getting our parking off the streets. On Sunday, when we have the most people there at our 11 o'clock service, we have about, we're 15, I was there last weekend, it was, we had 20, 15 cars on the roads, on the street, on the two-side streets. So, you, as you can see, we need that space. We could get almost all of it off the streets. I can't say that on a Easter Sunday that we might have a few still go out there, but for the most part, this would get our, the vehicles off the streets, and, because the roads are a little neighbor, are a little crowded, and people do park there themselves, and so if they're parking on both sides of the streets, it doesn't leave a lot of room in the middle to pass through those two roads. But I'm open to any questions if you have anything you want to ask of me.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Hamilton, for being here. We'll see if we have some questions for you. Any questions for our petitioner's representative? Mr. Long?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess, again, I want to go to the stormwater. You're, obviously, you're familiar that you're going to have to have some kind of solution for the stormwater detention, and the way it's sited right now, it'll probably have to be underground.
Correct. We are aware, and we did accommodate for that in the plans, but if there's something to comment further.
No, no, that's okay. So, the, the fact that you're, you know, looking at doing that, you plan to be here for a while, it seems to me. Is that correct?
We'd like to be, yes. At some point, I mean, if the, if the mission grows, then we could move on at some point.
Is the?
Not in the near future, but.
No, obviously, hopefully not if you're putting this kind of money into this. The, when you moved into this, this particular site, was your congregation large enough where the parking was adequate, or, and you've grown, or was your congregation this big and you always were on the streets?
We've had 30% growth over the last two years. When we, because we started out in Northville, well, we started out in Livonia at one of the hotels, but we were in Northville Theater downtown. In those days, we had about 70, 75 people in attendance on a Sunday. So, we've grown from about 70 to, about 130 is what we had just this last Sunday on, at the 11 o'clock service. Overall, we get about 240, 200-ish over the weekend, and we have services on Saturday night and two services on Sunday.
Okay.
So, you know, overall, we're right around the 200 mark, so we've grown from 70 to 200, and we've divided that amongst three services. We've added two services instead of just one. So, we're doing what we can scheduling-wise, but we now, we're going to, we want to plan for the future, where we have additional places for our 11 o'clock service, which is our busiest.
Sure. And you kind of took me where I wanted to go. The, when I came, I, I was kind of going both ways on this, and I wanted to see what the neighbors would have to say tonight. We don't have a whole lot of people in the audience, and I know you said you've reached out to them, so it seems to me that they're generally okay with it, which makes it easier for me to be okay with it. The concern I would have is, I, I think it's very important we get the parking off the street if we can. The thing I don't want to do is approve this, and then in two years, we're back to, you know, you're filling that lot, and it's good. It's good for business, and good for, good for the word if you're, if you're doing that, but, you know, it's not necessarily good for the neighborhood. But you kind of hit some key words that I wanted to hear. You've already done some scheduling changes in order to try to minimize the impact, and so the fact that you guys are able to think in other terms like that satisfies me. So, thank you. I'm in favor of this, and when it comes around, we'll take care of that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura?
I was happy to hear you talk about putting landscaping near the fence, between the, between the new drive and the fence.
Mm-hmm.
One of our concerns that we discussed at length at the study meeting was the impact on the neighbors to the immediate north. And so, what the other issue that we discussed, which you did not mention, was renewing the appearance of the fence. The fence is evidently, obviously aged, and is leaning, you know, back and forth, and not, not a great deal, but a little bit, and it's uneven going across. So, it looks like it's deteriorating a little bit, and this might be a time that doing some repair and restoration to it would be timely. Can you address that?
I can. We would love to do that. However, we don't own that fence. It belongs to the two properties to our north. If it would help move this forward, we would be willing to talk to the two parties involved, and I don't think they would object if we replaced the fence at our cost. And we don't object to that. We would like to look better anyway. It is somewhat old. Let's leave it at that.
Great. Thank you.
And I don't know how we do that formally, but we could make that part of the.
I guess we could make it part of the petition that, that you approach them with the intention, you know, with the suggestion that you be empowered to do it, and at that point, it becomes their decision.
Yes, yes.
You know, I mean, if it's their fence, you can't do it unilaterally, but if you make an effort, and I agree with you, I would guess and agree with you that they'll probably accept your offer.
I would.
So, so that, that, that will at least give us the opportunity to accomplish that.
Can I ask a quick question, right, about the fence? Would it be the same height, or would you like it taller?
It would have to, it would have to conform with the zoning ordinance.
I don't know that off the top of my head. I'm hoping that you might have that.
It's a six-foot fence, yeah.
So, six-foot fence, okay. That's, that's the answer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Bonjero?
Sure. Just a comment. I went by Sunday during one of your services, and it was crowded, and they were out in the street, and so I'm in favor of this. I think you really need it. But to, almost to back up to Mr. Long's point, so in the event you start getting, expanding more, the, the short-term solution is to offer more masses, right?
Yes, yes.
That kind of keeps the overflow, but then you're going to reach a point where maybe you can't keep offering so many masses on Sunday, but we'll worry about that, I guess, when the time comes.
Yeah, the only thing I could suggest, and it kind of came out of the planning, or the pre-planning meeting, but in the front, we have the one road there. We could put a second row right opposite those, if you will, make a second driveway towards the, toward Seven Mile. We're trying not to do that because of the trees that exist there, and, but that does give us some future expansion. I just don't think we need it quite yet at this time.
Well, you're very forward-thinking, so I think I'm in favor of this petition. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions, comments from any of our commissioners? All right. Any questions or comments from anybody in our audience? No one wishing to speak on this item. I will say that I do agree with you, Mr. Hamilton, that perhaps banking those, that space in the front for a future expansion, if needed, would be a wise move to realize that you could potentially add parking spaces in front of your building, but not compel you to do those at this time. It's probably the wise, you know, direction to go, because at least you know that you have another opportunity to add a few additional spaces if you needed to. So, good thinking on your part that you are looking forward to potentially needing those at some point.
It was one of our fallback plans, and it was mentioned in the meeting, but we thought this, the plan, that it was, the site plan that was as presented, what gave us the best traffic flow for now, and we could always do this in the future, so, thank you.
Okay, good. Is there any other comments that you wanted to make before we make our decision?
No, I don't believe so, unless you have anything else for me. Thank you.
I think we've covered everything that our commissioners wished to ask you, so we'll now go to the commissioners and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Long?
I'd like to offer an approving resolution. The request to expand the parking lot of the church located at 31840 Seven Mile Road is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval, and the following conditions. Number one, the site plan identified as sheet number C2.0 dated March 7, 2023, as revised and prepared by Beckett and Raider, is approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, that all onsite parking shall be approximately sized and. Number two, that all onsite parking shall be approximately sized and appropriately sized and marked, including any barrier-free spaces as may be required by the state of Michigan. Number three, the landscapes, landscaping shown on the approved site plan shall be installed to the satisfaction of the inspection department and permanently maintained in a healthy condition. Additional evergreens shall be planted along the north property line in cooperation with the neighbors and the planning department. Number four, all disturbed lawn areas, including road rights of way, shall be sodded instead of hydroseeding. Number five, underground sprinklers will be provided for all landscaped and sodded areas. Number six, the site shall comply with the city of Livonia or the Wayne County Stormwater Management Ordinance, whichever applies, and shall secure any required permits, including soil erosion and sedimentation control. Number seven, the three walls of the trash dumpster area shall be constructed from building materials that complement the building. The enclosure gate shall consist of long-lasting solid panel materials such as metal or cement fiber. Number eight, all pole-mounted exterior light fixtures shall not exceed a heat, a height of twenty feet and all exterior lighting shall be aimed and shielded to minimize stray light trespassing across property lines and glaring into adjacent roadways. Number nine, that the plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time of application for the certificate of occupancy. And number ten, under section thirteen dot thirteen of Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for one year only from the date of approval by the city council. Unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period. And I think we want to do some add-ons. Number eleven, Pete?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd offer the addition to Mr. Long's motion. Uh, the church shall contact the neighbors to the north of their site and offer to replace the existing fence with a fence of material and design mutually acceptable to both parties that conforms to all applicable, applicable ordinances.
It sounds good. We'll add that in. And then, uh, number twelve, I guess, should the fire department, should there not be a resolution between the fifteen and the twenty-foot discrepancies that this body approves it either way and, uh, is, is fine with it going forward to City Council? Where we, 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 we approve it in its current form, but should it be, should there be a compelled change, it does not have to come back to us.
So leave it to the discretion of the planning department.
Leave it to the discretion of the planning department. There we go.
I think that sounds good.
Sounds good.
Is there support for that?
Support.
All right, we have a motion made by Mr. Long. It's been, uh, supported by Mr. Bonjero. Uh, Mr. Toramina, you have been able to capture the essence of the changes that were made to this motion?
That's why we have an audio recording.
Exactly.
I'm not sure you can make sense of what I was saying.
And, and I think it's safe to say that, uh, that the, the work of the, on the fence that's in the back of the property, it's not that we're, we're not compelling, because it, because this petitioner doesn't own the fence, we're not compelling him to repair it, but just basically noting that we want, uh, them to work with the homeowners and, and try to replace. Does that sound correct?
Yes.
Encouraged.
Let's make the offer and give them the option.
Exactly, okay.
Yeah, the fence issue, I, I, I fully understand...
Okay.
...the intent there. Uh, the driveway is a little more convoluted, but I believe I, I understand that if, uh, if, if the fire department and inspection insists on a twenty feet, that, that doesn't mean, doesn't require it to come back, uh, for reconsideration.
Petitioner will comply, right? Yeah.
They'll comply with that requirement and what the latter will do is it'll force an adjustment on condition number three, which requires those plantings, because I'm not sure we can achieve the plantings along that fence line, so.
Noted.
The two are interconnected that way.
Or alternatively, they would have to remove the shed and, and move the road down toward, closer to their property.
That would be the other alternative.
Which would be an expensive option for them, but it's maybe the only option. So you can at least work with them on one of those. The road's got to shift either north or south, you know...
Right.
...to, to expand one way or the other, so. All right, uh, if everyone is okay with that motion, is there any other questions or comments on the motion before we take our roll? If not, if our secretary can take the roll on a motion to approve.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero is aye. Mr. Ventura?
Vote aye.
Mr. Woolshaw?
Vote aye. Motion passes. We'll go to City Council on approving recommendation. Good luck with your project.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Hamilton. And that takes us on to item number three on our agenda.
Petition number two-zero-two-three-dash-zero-three-dash-zero-eight-dash-zero-three submitted by No Far Hotel Group, requesting approval under sections three-point-one-three, six-point-three-zero and thirteen-point-thirteen of the Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance as amended to construct a four-story Staybridge Suites Hotel at three-one-five-zero-one Schoolcraft Road, located on the south side of Schoolcraft Road between Merriman Road and Hubbard Avenue in the northeast quarter of section twenty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. Again, this is a request to construct a hotel on the south side of Schoolcraft, just west of Merriman Road. Uh, this is a flag-shaped parcel that contains frontage on both Schoolcraft Road and Merriman Road. Along Schoolcraft, the frontage is, uh, three-hundred-and-ninety-seven feet and then on Merriman, uh, it's sixty-six feet. Uh, the site is in the process of being rezoned from C-three highway services to C-four high-rise commercial. The planning commission granted approval of the change of zoning in July of two thousand and twenty-two. City Council gave first reading on January thirtieth of this year. Hotels up to four stories in height are permitted in the C-four zoning district. So immediately east of this site is a gas station and then to the south and west are industrial uses. North across, uh, the expressway, are commercial, uh, businesses along Schoolcraft, uh, road. Uh, the site contains a seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot building that was originally built as a Mountain Jack's restaurant and was later converted to a beauty school. There are three driveways that provide site access, including two on Schoolcraft Road and one on Merriman. The building and all of their site improvements, uh, would be removed. The new hotel would be positioned near the middle of the property with parking on all four sides. The main entrance, uh, would face Schoolcraft Road. The building's overall length is two-hundred-and-thirty-five feet. Each floor plate or each floor would be about seventy-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-square, or, excuse me, seventeen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty square feet. So the gross floor area of all four floors, uh, would be just under seventy-one-thousand square feet. Uh, the first floor would contain ten guest suites, a great room, a shared living room, pantry, lobby, fitness center, uh, an indoor pool, guest and hotel laundry rooms, and then the second, third and fourth floors would all be similar, containing twenty-eight suites. So when you add all of the, uh, hotel, uh, rooms together, there would be a total of ninety-four. Uh, the hotel would be set back approximately eighty feet from Schoolcraft Road. The other setbacks are ninety feet along the west property line, sixty feet from the east property line and twenty-five feet from the south property line. Uh, the hotel does comply with all the city's required, minimum required yard setbacks. Parking for hotels is based on one space for each guest room plus one per employee. Overall, there would be ninety-eight required parking spaces. The site plan shows ninety-nine parking spaces and as was suggested at the study meeting, the fifteen spaces along the driveway to Merriman Road, uh, would be land banked. So that would provide, uh, initially a, a total of eighty-four parking spaces. There would be a trash enclosure. It would be in the southwest corner, uh, with the opening facing north. Uh, the walls in this case would be eight feet high and consist of materials that would match the building. Uh, access, uh, to the site would rely on the same number of curb cuts that presently exist, the two on Schoolcraft and one on Merriman. The only change would be to the westerly drive on Schoolcraft, which would be shifted slightly, uh, further to the west, uh, but all three approaches are designed to accommodate two-way traffic. Uh, site stormwater management would be, uh, underground. Uh, there's a detailed landscaping plan that was submitted with the application, showing nine full-size trees, four ornamental trees, sixty-nine shrubs along Schoolcraft Road, and then it also provides details for landscaping around the site's perimeter, uh, within the parking lot islands and then also along the foundation of the, uh, the building. That was, uh, one of the changes to the plan set that you have, uh, before you this evening. Uh, building materials, looking at the building itself, uh, it would consist primarily of ethus. Portions of the first floor include stone veneer and either tile, metal or a composite panel. Uh, the building would have a flat roof, as you can see from this, um, rendering. The overall height would be fifty-four feet, five inches. Uh, the colors, as you can see too, uh, would be, be a mix of brown, beige and, and I believe, uh, either a dark blue or maybe a, a black. Uh, the design would be wood frame and then also, uh, visible on this rendering is a column-supported canopy that would be provided over the building's, uh, main entrance. Uh, photometric plan was submitted that provides information on, on the site lighting, including the fixtures type, uh, height, location and illumination levels. The height of all the light poles would be limited to twenty feet as required. And then we have not reviewed this in terms of signage, but they would be allowed one wall sign, uh, at two-hundred-and-thirty-five square feet and, uh, one ground and possibly two ground signs measuring thirty square feet. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
First letter is from the Engineering Division. That reads, and it's dated March twenty-first, uh, "The existing parcel is currently serviced by Public Sanitary Sewer, Water Main and Storm Sewer. Although there are minor revisions planned for the existing services, we do not expect any impacts to the existing systems at this time. The proposed project will be required to follow the latest version of the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance. The submitted drawings do, do not indicate stormwater detention is proposed, but we will do a thorough, uh, review..." Oh, no, they do indicate stormwater detention is proposed, but we will do a thorough review of the calculations once the, the drawings are submitted for permitting. The submitted landscape plan shows proposed tree species that are not favored for planting within the city, most notably the maple and honey locust varieties. It is advised that should the project move forward, the developer meet with the city arborists to discuss acceptable options for planting on the site. It should be noted that any disturbances within the Merriman Road right-of-way will require the owner to obtain permits from the Wayne County Department of Public Service." And that letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter from the Fire Marshal dated April eleventh and, uh, which reads, "We have no objections to this proposal with the following stipulations. Number one, subject buildings are to be provided with an automatic sprinkler system and onsite hydrants shall be located between fifty feet and one-hundred feet from the fire department connection. A fire access road shall be provided with not less than twenty feet of unobstructed width and have a minimum of thirteen feet, six inches of vertical clearance in accordance with NFPA one number, or, of two thousand and fifteen. And three, chapters eight and nine shall be followed as they relate to fire protection features and alarm systems. NFPA one-oh-one, two thousand and fifteen edition. A further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official plan set." Next is a letter from the Division of Police dated March twenty-second that reads, "I have reviewed the plans in connection with the petition. I have concerns that the single one-way lane on the south side of the proposed business will pose a public safety risk. It will be difficult for emergency response vehicles to navigate in times of emergency as it can easily be blocked. Even in the absence of obstructions, it is too narrow for large vehicles to travel down during fires or medical emergencies." Uh, that letter signed by Paul Walters, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. There's a letter from the Inspection Department dated, dated, uh, April tenth, uh, that indicates, uh, that, uh, the above reference or the petition has been reviewed and the following is noted. Number one, parking spaces shall be ten feet wide by twenty feet deep and double striped. Barrier-free parking spaces shall be sized and marked in accordance with the Michigan Building Code. The fire lanes shall be properly marked and signed, installed in accordance with the internal fire, International Fire Code. And then for all signage shall conform to Livonia Vision zoning ordinance." Um, that letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. Next, a letter from the Finance Department dated March twenty-second indicating no objections. That letter is signed by Connie Campu, Chief Accountant, and a similar letter from the Office of the Treasurer dated March twenty-ninth and signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any questions for our planning staff?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bonjero?
Um, Mark, the, so the fire lane on the south side, our, uh, the, our plan in here shows the sidewalk still there, but that's not going to be there, right?
So I failed to mention this in the, uh, my presentation. One of the changes, uh, the plan, with the plan you're looking at, uh, here, uh, from the one that was studied, uh, viewed at study session, is, uh, that, that road behind, uh, the building, uh, on the south side has been increased. Uh, so it went from whatever the dimension was previously to, to the twenty-feet is recommended by, or the twenty-four feet, I believe, recommended by the, uh, by the police. Uh, we talked about a sidewalk being provided along there and in fact, uh, the suggestion was a grade, uh, a sidewalk that would be at grade with the, um, uh, with the road. What, what's provided as the sidewalk comes here, it terminates right here at the corner of the building and then, uh, it would be asphalt pavement, um, immediately adjacent to, to the building. So, um, we'll have to re, discuss this with the engineer, whether or not there still is the option of providing, um, a grade sod, a sidewalk, um, along this portion of the building that could be used both, uh, in the, in the event of an emergency, um, or, but it, but at least would provide some pedestrian safety along that portion of the site.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for our planning staff? Mr. Ventura?
Mr. Toramina, in, as part of the conversation about the widening of that road and the discussion of the sidewalk and not a sidewalk, we also talked about having bollards along the back of that building in as much as it was going to be so tight. Are they included in the revised...
I do not see those, uh, Mr. Ventura. Uh, there is not, and it, there's no note on this site plan showing any, any kind of protection on the edge of the building.
On the, on the updated, uh, plan, second page, it shows two bollards, right, one at each corner.
Okay, let me...
Yeah, zoom in really tight.
Yeah, it does.
Is it?
Yeah, there's two on page three.
I was looking at, is it on this plan?
Yeah, page two.
Yeah, that one is the middle. Next one.
Right here.
Yeah, I don't have these in order, so I, I had the site plan up, so.
You had, you had one that showed it. Not that one.
It's over there.
You can actually see it on that one in the, but they're not...
Yeah, right here, right here. I guess they're, they're marked. They're shown on this, on this plan, but they're not marked. They're, they're probably marked on one of the subsequent plans.
On our submiddle, this peg that's on here.
Yeah, okay.
So, a couple of bollards. Okay, any other questions, comments? If not, our petitioner is in the audience. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, planning commission members. I'm Brian Biskinner from Powell Engineering. My last name is spelled B as in boy, I-S-K-N-E-R. Uh, forty-seven-hundred Cornerstone Drive, White Lake, Michigan, four-eight-three-three. Um, I'm here with the owners, Robert and William No Far, and, um, Mark, you did a magnificent job going over everything. Um, bollards are found on sheet S-two. Uh, as far as the sidewalk, uh, I, I am good showing a sidewalk there. When we changed it to pavement, um, it's really up to the fire safety official who requested the twenty-four-foot, uh, two-way aisle. Doesn't matter to us. We, we kind of talked about showing an at-grade sidewalk and then I thought about putting it something painted, um, emergency pedestrian, but what, whatever the city would prefer on that, I'm good with, doesn't bother me. I just happen to know that the International Fire Code and Fire Marshals and public safety, when they, when they see that, they're worried about getting their full twenty-four, but I can show it, we can resubmit it on the next time through and if they're good with it, we, we, we don't mind, obviously, if there's a sidewalk there. I would like to mention that, uh, the owners have all, a, a, also on sheet two, the one with the bollards, uh, on the northeast area of the building, that they've added six electric vehicle spaces with charging stations. And I think that's about all I have. Other than just a brief description of the, uh, materials on the building, I think Mark hit it just fine. It is primarily ethus, but we do have, uh, stone, uh, going up about, uh, about twelve feet for most of the first floor of the building. That would be where any humans might come in contact with it or sprinklers. So you want a durable surface around that first floor of the building. Uh, and then there's also porcelain tile going up that middle lighter brown, uh, architectural element just to the left of the Staybridge sign. Uh, so you got metal wall panels, the stone and the porcelain tile is... Uh, so you got metal wall panels, the stone, and the porcelain tile is, is three other materials other than just ephes, uh, on the building. This is the Staybridge prot- prototype, this is what they want to see, and that's why we're, it's a premium brand and, uh, and they, I thought, I think they put some good materials on there. Also, you know, we see older ephes around town sometimes, and, um, not all ephes is created equally, and there's been a lot of, um, a lot of improvements in ephes over the decades, you know, it's been around a long time. So this is a premium product on the building with a sixty-year durability. Maintenance does not, is, is included with sixty-year durability, but we think it's a, a good material, but we, uh, we look forward to your questions and comments.
All right, thank you, uh, sir. Is there any questions or comments from any of our commissioners?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Long. Mr. Toramina, could you put up the, uh, the picture of the, yeah, that one there? Thank you. So, just so I'm clear, so the, the first floor is brick, and then that, that brown section to the left of the Staybridge sign, the vertical, you said that that is a composite?
Porcelain.
Porcelain.
Okay. Porcelain tile.
Okay, and then the, the, I, I guess it's black or dark gray, the, that there, is that ephes?
That's ephes.
That's ephes, and then the, the lighter, the white, or the, the, that's ephes as well?
Pretty much everything above that, the, the stone along the first floor, everything above that, except for the architectural element that is porcelain, is ephes.
Okay. Uh, so, you know, I mean, I, I, I get that that's kind of the, the prototype, I guess. I'd like to see maybe if the black portions could be swapped out as, as something else, as a composite material or, uh, a, a metal material. I mean, I think that I, I could get, I, I could sign off on the, on the white sections being ephes. Um, I'd like to see a little bit more. That's, uh, that's my comment. Not sure that that's a question, that's, that's my comment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Opinions are welcome.
Yes, as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions, comments from any of our commissioners? To Mr. Bisker or any of the, uh, other petitioners here? No other questions or comments from any of our commissioners? There's no one else in our audience other than the petitioner? Is there anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Bisker, Biskner, uh, to your presentation before we make our decision?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm good. I don't know if, uh, you want to, uh, um, address the, the darker ephes?
Looks like, uh, Mr. Nofar is coming forward. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
Um, basically, in regards to the ephes, uh, we just did a property, uh, a few years back, the Holiday Express, uh, down the street, three miles down. That has all brick on the first floor and the remainder of the building is ephes. We haven't had no issues whatsoever in there. Um, the franchise are very stringent about as far as changing the design. Uh, this is a very modernized-looking building. They have four different elements to it to, you know, accent the building. We love it. We, we really, you know, appreciate the design. Um, any deviation, of course, you know, it's custom, it costs more money, and with everything that's going on these days, everything has gotten, gone sky-high. So I'm hoping you guys can just, you know, sympathize with us and just try to leave the design the way it is. It's a gorgeous design, it's much better than the eyesore it is right now. Anything's better, so, um, I'm hoping that you guys can understand that and, uh, work with us.
And, uh, just because you and your brother look so much alike, can you let us know, uh, which Nofar you are?
I'm Robert.
Robert, okay, good. I just want to make sure that, uh, your comments are attributed to the right name.
We even dress alike a little bit.
If, if you said something that, uh, someone didn't like, then maybe you should say that you're your brother or something, right? You know, fool everybody. Uh, all right, so, uh, is there any, uh, other questions or comments? Anybody wishing to address, uh, Mr. Nofar directly from the commission? Mr. Toramina?
Of course, in the rear, it's, it's very difficult to tell, but do the, does the rear elevation, side elevations have the same dark panelized? And I'm going to go back to the rendering, because that probably shows it best, but the, uh, the darker colors on the building, um, we just have this one rendering showing the front and side. Do, do these appear on the, on both the east elevation and the rear elevation as well?
Um, I don't know, is there a rear elevation here? I mean, I.
There's, there's only this one rendering, so my question is.
This is a rendering from the franchise.
I'm sorry, say again?
This is a rendering from the franchise, a prototypical franchise rendering. I don't recall, I don't know, I thought there was one for the rear.
Okay.
But I'm assuming it's probably complements the, the back as well as the front, as far as looks go.
Okay. You, so you, you haven't seen one of these buildings, or you can't recall if the?
I have, but I can't recall, no.
I, I think it does, but it's a little, it's a little challenging to, uh, to see that on these plans, just the way they're, they're set up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any other questions or comments from anyone? I do have one question, uh, perhaps from Mr. Biskner. Uh, the, um, ephes sections that are on this property, including the dark section that is, was referenced by Mr. Long, uh, that's below the Staybridge Suites, uh, sign, is there a texture to that ephes or any architectural aspect to it, or is it just straight ephes?
Well, the, uh, I believe the dark, all the dark portions are, are, um, pushed out from the main building line, and I will say this. The dark ephes has a distinct reveal pattern, uh, that is different from the li, the lighter ephes. So, um, I haven't touched it myself personally, but it, it is different from the other ephes with a reveal pattern. So I will, with a certain amount of confidence, say it has a different pattern than the other ephes. Besides the fact, uh, all the dark, as you can, as you can see, um, they're, they're also set out from the main building line.
Right, like a bump out.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, the reason I ask is because obviously it, you know, it's a little hard to see what you're looking at with the dark material, uh, you know, because it doesn't show shadows and, and light very well, but I'm just looking at a screenshot of a, of the, what's called Prototype Seven of the Staybridge Suites building, which is apparently the prototype that you're working with, and it's a little bit, uh, lighter picture that I just happened to have on my iPad here. As I zoom in on it, I see that there is a, sort of a scoring or lines, uh, sort of texture to that, uh, ephes material underneath the windows and between the windows and so on.
That, 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 that appears on the computer. It's, it's hard, very hard to see on the, on the screen, on the television, but if I zoom in on the computer, uh, it's precisely as you described.
Seeing that.
It's those scorelines that, that run, um, adjacent to the windows.
Okay, so it's, it's not exactly just plain ephes, it's got a little, little style to it, I guess, if you want to call it that.
Yeah, it has, it, it, it's, it's a, it's, of, of the ephes, it's, it's, it's the more, it's a more, it says reveal pattern, but it is supposed to be more distinct and set out. The color also, that's black, it looks on there, but it's really, it's really like a navy charcoal. It's, it's got a blue hue, um, uh, a, and so that black kind of makes it, I, yeah, the, I don't know if you want to, I don't know if you can see that, but it's, it's more, it's more blue, and it does have a pattern. It has, you know, I can't, I'm not an expert in that exact ephes, but it, it does have a reveal pattern that's supposed to make it look different from the others.
Okay, yeah.
I wish I could say I saw it myself and fell in love with it, but, um, because the, the darker, uh, pushed-out elements are, are meant to be distinctive on the building, and that ephes is, is to be different.
Okay, all right, thank you. I, I do agree that, I think in, in general, this is a very attractive, uh, looking design for this, this, uh, hotel, but I, I do agree with my fellow commissioners in the sense that I would like to see something a little bit more than just all the ephes, even the dark portion being a metal panel or something along those lines, but I guess we'll see how things go. Uh, but that's just my thoughts. Uh, thank you. If there's nothing else from any of our fellow commissioners or anyone else in the audience, uh, then I think a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution. This request to construct a four-story Staybridge Hotels Suites Hotel at thirty-one-five-oh-one Schoolcraft Road is approved, subject to City Council approval in the following conditions. Number one, the dimensional site plan identified as Sheet S-two dated April fourth, twenty-twenty-three, as revised and prepared by Powell Engineering and Associates, LLC, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. All onsite parking shall be appropriately sized and marked, including any barrier-free spaces as may be required by the state of Michigan. Number three, a landscaping plan identified as Sheet number L-one dated April fourth, twenty-twenty-three, prepared by Vert Bird Landscaping Architecture is hereby approved, provided that the fifteen parking spaces shown along the driveway from Merriman Road be removed and replaced with landscaping. Number four, all disturbed lawn areas shall be sodded instead of hydroseating. Number five, underground sprinklers will be provided for all landscaped and sodded areas. Number six, the exterior elevations plan identified as Sheets A-two dot one and A-two dot two dated March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, prepared by Jared Architecture are approved, provided that a substantial portion of the ephes on the building be replaced with either masonry or metal com- composite panels. At a minimum, the modified areas shall include the, I'm going to add a word here, Mark, the entire second floor of the building and all of the dark-colored features denoted as C on the exterior materials legend. Number seven, that three walls of trash dumpster area shall be constructed from materials that complement the building. The enclosure gates shall be of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting solid panel material. Number eight, all light fixtures shall not exceed twenty feet in height and shall be shielded to minimize glare trespassing on adjacent properties and roadways. Number nine, that the issues as outlined in the correspondence dated April first, twenty-twenty-three from the Fire Marshal, including providing automatic sprinkler systems, onsite hydrants, and an unrestricted fire access road of not less than twenty feet wide, shall be resolved to the satisfaction of the Department of Public Safety, Livonia Fire and Rescue. Number ten, only conforming signage is approved at this petition. Any additional signing shall, signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Number eleven, no light, no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on the site, including the building or around the windows. Number twelve, that the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the Inspecting Department at the time that building permits are applied for. And number thirteen, under section, section thirteen dot thirteen of Livonia Vision Twenty-One zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for one year only from the date of approval by the City Council. Unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
May I ask a question?
Sure, one, one moment. Uh, we have a, a approving resolution by Mr. Ventura, supported by Mr. Bonjero.
I can give it to Long, it's okay.
We both were sorry to speak. Um, I mean, it's, it's either one, it's fine.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Long.
Flip a coin, Ian.
All right, we'll give it to Mr. Long if Mr. Bonjero is okay with that, so, uh, we'll go with Ventura and Long on the approving resolution. Sir, your question?
Um, number five, six, or seven, did that, did that motion instruct, uh, that, that the, all the dark ephes be converted to masonry or metal?
I'll, I'll read it again.
Okay. Number six.
The exterior elevations plans identified as Sheet A-two dot one and A-two dot two dated March thirty-first, prepared by Jared Architecture are applied, are approved, provided that a substantial portion of the ephes on the building be replaced with either masonry, metal, or composite panels. At a minimum, the modified areas shall include the entire second floor of the building and all of the dark-colored features denoted as C on the exterior materials legend.
Is that to clarify that for you?
Okay.
That is what's, uh, been offered by our, uh, commission, and, uh, that is what's been supported. Is there any discussion on the motion? If there's no further discussion, a roll call is in order.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero votes aye. Mr. Wilshaw?
Votes aye, and my item will go on to City Council on approving recommendation. Uh, you have heard there is some modifications that were made to our approving recommendation from your plan. Uh, you can, this is a, our, our body is a, is a recommending body, the City Council, so as you go on to City Council, you can work with them if, uh, you want to, uh, proceed with, with your changes, and we wish you certainly good luck with your project. Thank, thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Planning Commission. Have a wonderful evening.
You do the same.
And let's hope the snow goes away, right?
Yeah, we'll get, uh, summer or spring eventually. Right now, we're still in winter, I guess. Uh, we have one item left on our agenda.
That's the approval of the minutes of the one hundred, one thousand one hundred and ninety-seventh public hearings and re, regular meeting held by the Planning Commission on April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three.
All members were present with the exception of Mr. Ventura. We do need four votes to approve this, and, um, based on my cursory reading of Robert's Rules of Order, it does say that, uh, even members who are not at the meeting are able to vote on the approval of minutes, so, uh, if someone would like to offer an approving or?
So moved.
Motion on that, uh, by Mr. Long?
I'll support that.
And that's supported by Mr. Bonjero. If there's no exception, I think we can safely show forward with Mr. Ventura included in that, and, uh, there's no objections noted from anyone on the board, so those minutes have been approved, and that takes us to the agen, end of our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the commission this evening? If there's no other business, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second support?
That is a motion to adjourn by Long and supported by Ventura. Again, if there's no objections, I think we can safely show forward to adjourn the meeting tonight, and, uh, we will, uh, thank our Livonia Television staff for bringing this meeting to the community, and we will have our meeting adjourned tonight at eight, ten P.M. and wish a good night to the city of Livonia.